Please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we've come before you with gratitude for this opportunity to serve our community. Thank you for the many blessings you have poured upon our city, its people, and its leaders. As we gather here tonight, we ask for your guidance and wisdom in decisions we make. Help us to lead with integrity, humility, and compassion as we seek to do what is best for the ones we serve. Bless each council member, city staff, and every individual present here and online. Unite us in a purpose and inspire us to work together with respect and understanding. We pray for the well-being of our city, for its safety, prosperity, and peace. May our efforts reflect your goodness and bring you honor. In your holy name we pray.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
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 Okay, we will start with our approval of minutes as written. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, they'll stand as written. We will start with our report from council members, and we're going to start with our retiring councilman, Ward Six Councilman Robinson. Do you have a word report for us?
Yes, ma'am. Happy birthday to my mother Mary on August 23rd. She would not want me to say how many, but best wishes. And also best wishes to all of the candidates for public office here in Easly. Best wishes to all of you. Changing the subject, we have a saying in my line of work that ethical considerations are meant to be used as a shield and not a sword. They should not be used as an offensive weapon in political matters, and I am aware of ethical complaints that have been filed, and I know personally some of them have been filed to perhaps gain an advantage in a matter before council, and that's just wrong. Thank you.
Okay. Ward Five, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you. I had the pleasure and honor of being selected for jury duty this morning. I did not make the cut, unfortunately, but I want to say that Judge Snow and the court administration made everything as painless as possible, the check-in, the voir-droit. It was just, it went really smoothly. I've been to other courts, I've done that in other courts, and this, it went very smoothly, and so I just appreciate the court administration on that.
Okay, thank you. Ward Four, Councilman Jones.
Yes, ma'am. This Saturday, I had the privilege of attending the First Responders Prayer and Appreciation Day, and spoke with Tommy Blankenship and Billy Gibson from the Pickens County Emergency Management Systems were there. There was also 60 other people in attendance. We prayed for all our first responders and what they encountered on a daily basis. So, we also prayed for their families. It was a true pleasure to, as Sheriff Blankenship said, "We are not perfect, but we do the best we can." So I just encourage y'all to pray for our first responders. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward Three, Councilwoman Rainey.
I had an interaction with one of the neighbors that was walking through our neighborhood, and the question she asked was, "Why doesn't these developers be held at the same standard as a homeowner does?" That the grass along the area where the development is going is like waist-high. A complaint was filed, the guy came out with a weed eater, and weed eat it around the mailboxes, and that was it. So, I don't understand how we can hold our homeowners accountable, but yet we don't hold the developers accountable.
Councilwoman Davidson, Ward Two.
Yes, good evening and welcome to everyone here. And going through the department reports, if I read this properly, I think I did, it's a little distressing that there's been a significant increase in the police department with confiscation of methamphetamines in the city of Pickens, ah, excuse me, city of Easly. So just be aware, you hear it on the news, but it's here in Easly. And that was a significant increase from the confiscation from last month. The fire department, because of all the hot, toasty, steaming temperatures we've had, they had a significant increase in press fryers, so we just need to be aware of that when we're in those dry times. Of course, the building department, I had a contact from constituent today who, of course, also sang their praises for jumping on an issue that had been longstanding in this neighborhood, and they wanted to convey their appreciation for what they did. And also, again, which I've tried to promote, our parks and recreation and our packets. Mrs. Short gave us a list of a number of art classes, fitness classes, line dance, open gym, and a beautification committee. So, there are volunteer opportunities and also programs for our citizens to participate in. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward One, Councilman O'Neal.
Well, I'm happy to report that in Ward One, to the best of my knowledge, there are only three people that are not real happy with me and the job I'm doing, and one of those folks is my ex-wife. So, we'll take her out of the equation and just say that most everybody over that way seems to be quite happy and well and proud and pleased with the way the city's going. I would like to report back on something from last week. There is an organization in Grebel called Upstate Warrior Solutions. I wasn't familiar with it, I'm not familiar with it too much this time. They inducted Matthew Hare, the young officer that was killed here in the city a couple of years ago, and you all are familiar with that, and it was terrific. The place was full, I was there, Mrs. Davidson was there, the mayor was there, Mr. Couch was there, along with a whole lot of our policemen and firemen. And it's really terrific to see things like that, and like I said, I'm not real familiar with what they do. Pickens County people are very invested and involved with that, the McKiss family contributed quite a bit, and it's terrific. But they hung Matthew's picture up with the other three officers that are there that have died in the line of duty. And then they also had quite a few other people that are now dead that were in the military, like Captain Kimberly Hampton, whose family has been friends of mine forever and ever and ever, her mom and dad, Rev. Cole in Pickens, who was, I was, I served in the South Carolina National Guard with Rev. who is now dead. And there might have been some other guys from Pickens County that I just didn't pick up on the photographs, but I just wanted to call, that's on Pelham Road. If you go on Pelham Road just off of Hayward, it's on your right, it's open, and you go in and look at these photographs and see these people's names and think about them and what they've done. And it was a terrific Thursday, wasn't it? Thursday, yeah, Thursday, they had that. So, that's about it.
Thank you. Okay, I have a short message. I want to have a huge thank you go out to our incredible city employees for making our World Series collaboration such a success. It was a scorcher, everybody knows how hot it was, so that's a lot of hard work in the heat, but your dedication paid off. The event was a big hit with the community and all who participated. Council continues to review and provide input on the new Unified Development Ordinance, which we look forward to hopefully finalizing soon to help guide the future growth coming and development in the city. With the new school year underway, I did recently have the pleasure of welcoming middle school teachers back to Getty's Middle, and I'm looking forward to getting back in the schools and working with the kids and the teachers. It, I just, our internship, our job shadowing, our volunteer opportunities, to me, it's just important that the students feel engaged and involved and invested in our city, and so I'm looking forward to that because they're back on campus, that means I can be back on campus. And finally, mark your calendars, this fall is packed with exciting events for all ages, including our very first Taste of Easly that's coming up September the 27th, presented in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, and we can't wait to see you there. Follow up with that on updates on city activity, do we have updates?
Yes, ma'am. We have the ATAX Committee, we're taking applications for those funds until September 7th. The application is online, and we also need two people to serve, well, that's the ATAX Funds taking applications, we're also taking applications for two people to be on the actual committee, lodging, cultural, if you know anyone that would, that send those lines of work, we'd definitely need some more people. We need two, and again, September 7th the deadline to apply for funds, such as, I think, Little League applies, American Legion, Museum.
Theater, football theaters apply.
Several, several like that, that's the type of organizations that qualify, so the applications are out there.
And it's for people that work in hospitality, or business owners in hospitality, food service, so if you know a business owner that would like to be involved with that. Okay, next we have community announcements. Mr. Bob Fetter with the Easly City Museum.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At that time of the year, I wanted to announce the annual fundraiser for the Easly Area Museum. It's going to be October 23rd, it's a Thursday evening, like we usually do, it'll be six to nine, going to be a good time to be had by all. We'll start with cheese and veggie trays, have a Low Country Boil with rolls and dessert.
(Inaudible)
Okay. In commemoration of October being Textile Heritage Month, we'll have a special art exhibit by our own Judy Aiken Young. Her paintings of life in the Mill Village have been published in many magazines and periodicals on textile life, and we're really looking forward to that for everyone to enjoy. The cost is going to be a $50 donation per person. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the community announcements, so we'll go into the citizens wishing to address city council. Remind you that you have three minutes, and it's, there won't be an exchange, so you can speak. If you have questions that you would like to have answered, you can email that afterwards to your representative. And who do we have, Jennifer?
Kim Valentine.
Hi, Mayor, Council, appreciate you having me today. With Pickens County Mills on Wheels, and as you may or may not know, we are opening a third senior center in Easly at the old YMCA that's being renovated. I had actually forwarded some stuff to your administrator, so I'm hoping he'll send you the invite to the ribbon cutting that will be held on August 28th at 11:00 a.m. in front of our facility, and that's at 250 Burns Road. We will continue throughout the day with an open house, so if you have friends, family, neighbors that are 55 and older, I would encourage you to invite them to the senior center. We are going to have every day, Monday through Friday, except for Labor Day, our first day of opening will be the day after, so September 2nd will be up and running. But we will have activities each day, we'll have exercise, and we'll have dining for lunch. It'll be open from 8:30 to 2:30. The membership is $25 per person annually, for a couple is 35. Lunch is around $5, if you're a member, it's $3. So anyone coming in, if you're not a member, you can definitely get a plate of food for $5, can't beat that. So I do have a couple of flyers, I will just pass those along here, and that's it, and I appreciate your time.
Alma Ferguson.
Thank you for having me, for letting me come, and just forced a few concerns that we have from the wards of five and six. And I'm Alma Ferguson, I live at 241 Lake Court here in Easly. And first of all, I want to thank everyone for the wonderful job they have done down at the Mollin Cemetery. You know, that's an old historical cemetery, and the tents that were down there, we appreciate you getting those taken care of, but there's still work to be done. And, you know, it's, it's hard to get when you lay someone, there's people that's putting that and forget about it. So we have a community, if we want that to, to not reflect on our city, then we should keep it up like we do the rest of it, so. But I do want to thank you for getting, taking care of that. And also, there has been some, the, some lines that were down on Zion Street in Easly, and we thank you for getting that taken care of, because that was at 107 Zion Street, and it had been down for a long time, and we've been trying to get, and it was, I guess, utility lines or cable lines, whatever, but the city worked with us and it got that taken care of, and we want to thank everyone that was involved in that. Because, you know, when people do something for you, you like to know that, let them know that you appreciate that. And also, there are a few things that still need to be taken care of, like, is the house on Willer Street, that 130 Willer Street, has, I think it's a big metal line that, I don't know what it's a, utility line or what, that's crossed that lot, and we just need somebody to see about who is in charge of taking care of that. Is it a utility line or cable line, whatever? I mean, you know, it's, to me, it's a dangerous situation regardless of what. And also, we want to give a special thanks to the, you combined utility for cutting the, all the way up, and our community and the county and the community, cutting all that debris and everything back from the road so we can see us usually, and if that always stops, I know that hopefully we're going to get that roundabout, say, one of these days when we get the money and everybody get their little two cent worth in before something bad happens out there. We're hoping that we can get that done, but they did cut all that debris back so we can see a little bit. Now, when I got ready to come today, I mean, they just may have known that I was coming to see the captain. (Laughter) But anyway, I'll be back next week because I got another face for it.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Talbert and city council members. I am speaking tonight on behalf of Shine the Soup Kitchen here in Easly. It is one of, I believe, the only soup kitchen we have in Easly that feeds our homeless and those less fortunate going through difficult times financially. They're working, but they are living in their cars, who don't have enough money to stretch to make meals. They serve 170 meals per day, Monday through Thursday. Then they serve an additional 30 people to the women and children that are part of the program that live in the homes. So that's 200 meals a night. They are short. Their August needed items, and I have a list here, green beans, green peas, corn, canned potatoes, stove top stuffing, three-compartment foam hinged lube containers, packaged coud lourie cases of water. They will take the small cans because they do give that out, people come. I have volunteered, and people will come and say, "I don't have any food, I have a kitchen where I can heat something up." And they will go and fill a box, I've helped them fill boxes of food, different stores, Walmart, Publix, Ingles, always donates extra meat and everything, bread, and we are handing out food to them all the time. They also would appreciate the larger cans that you can get sent, the 110 ounce ones, because for the meals that they cook. And these are good meals, you know, they're not just something thrown together, they, people that are cooking are putting a lot of thought and effort into this. So if you could, you can go to their Facebook page, but this month, they have put, actually out on Facebook, that they are short. And I was there last week, and the shelves are getting empty. The other thing is, if anybody knows they are being, they are not able to renew their lease the end of the year. The owner of the building where they're at has decided he's going to do something else with it. So they are currently looking for a place. They had an address where they wanted to build something, but it did not work out. And so if anybody knows that your property can be donated, or small price, or whatever, you can speak with Kim, I believe is her name, she's over the soup kitchen, and they have a Facebook page, and just to help them out, they do a great service, and these people are so grateful for anything they get. Anyway, if anybody's interested, I'd like to hand some to the city council members, just so if you know somebody that maybe could help out, and I have papers if anybody else is interested. Thank you for your time.
Jenny McDrunkin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I missed you guys last month. I want to applaud you for, I guess, I don't know if it's called tabling, Resolution 2025-12 regarding acceptable use policies for elected officials, technology and things like that. I applaud you for putting it under review, legal review. I really, really hope a rewrite, a massive rewrite. I found much of it to be a violation of free speech rights and certainly a major road block for effective communication with constituents. Like I said, my hope is I never see that resolution again. If I do, I hope it is with extensive revisions. Elected officials should be responsible, professional, accurate in all communication, but we must never, ever, ever limit your free speech rights. Just because you ran for office and were elected doesn't mean that your rights to free speech are curtailed, they're, they're just not. And sometimes, the best way to effectively communicate with your constituents is through more casual means, not official cold emails. So I appreciate blogs, I appreciate direct communication, and I would never want that to be limited in a way that my non-legal opinion would be unconstitutional. Thank you for putting effort into working on that resolution before you went forward with it. Have a nice evening.
That's it, okay. We have unfinished business next on the agenda, but we have no ordinance for second reading. So we'll move into new business ordinance first reading, and first up is Ordinance 2025-07 to rezone approximately 0.844 acres of real property located at 715 North A Street from neighborhood commercial to residential 7.5 zoning. Is there a motion to bring this to the floor to accept or deny?
I make a motion, we bring it to the floor for discussion.
To accept.
Yeah, to make a motion to accept. I'll make the motion to accept it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I know we discussed this earlier, is there any further discussion before we vote? This will be the first reading, there will be another reading. Are we ready for the question?
Mayor, for the audience, it's the, it's the property there outlined, middle of the screen in blue.
And we did talk about the fact that this is currently neighborhood commercial, and I believe the owner was not able to sell it for neighborhood commercial and is interested in rezoning it to put homes on it, is the understanding.
I would just like to say, I'm reviewing the planning commission minutes. Mr. Wright, Calvin Wright, and this is a concern, that with this being a heavily traffic road, trash pickup and traffic adding more in-and-out access versus neighborhood commercial where you have the across-the-street businesses, and they just have, you know, one entrance coming in and out, so I, right now, at this, at this point, I do think that that is a concern.
Well, one of the things that was brought up in the work session was that the residences that were going to be built there was going to have shared driveways, so, you know, it's not going to have, I think there's possible putting four residences there, so you're not going to have four driveways, you're just going to have two. Even though there's medical buildings across the street, that street on the side where this property is, it's a lot of residential and all, and you can see all behind them, so I don't have an issue with voting yes for this.
So the motion is to accept it, so we'll take a vote on that. And all in favor of accepting it, raise your hand. All opposed? Next up, we have Ordinance 2025-08 to adopt a revised business license ordinance in accordance with the Business License Standardization Act that we are required to update every two years for our class schedules. Is there a motion to bring this to accept?
I make a motion to accept this license ordinance.
A second.
Okay.
Would you please explain, or Mr. Couch, if you will explain, I think there may have been a little bit of confusion, but this is something that is required by the state for us to do, and as far as keeping up with all the business license categories, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Every odd year, which is every other year, we're required, everyone in, everyone in the state's required to pass this, to update it in accordance with what they have determined are the classes of businesses.
Thank you.
And we're required to update it by the end of this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have the motion on the floor, all in favor of adopting the revised business license ordinance in accordance with the Standardization Act, raise your hand. Okay, so that's passed. Next up is Ordinance 2025-09 authorizing the conveyance of an easement across the Doodle Trail.
I make a motion to approve this ordinance. Second.
Okay. Tom, do you want to explain to the people here what we're?
Yes, ma'am. See, on the screen there, there's the properties, 306, 310 on the south side of the trail, and then 308 on the north side are the three properties in question, they all belong to the, to the estate of the Martin Estate. They've had an easement, that driveway you see there on 310 crossing over has been there basically forever, they've used it, and, but it's never been a recorded easement, so they're just trying to, for the purposes of the estate, clean up everything, they just want a recorded easement to allow access across the trail.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on that. All in favor of authorizing the conveyance of an easement across the Doodle Trail, raise your hand. Okay, none opposed. Next, we have first reading of Ordinance 2025-10 authorizing the conveyance of a right-of-way maintenance agreement with Doodle Trail Properties.
I make a motion to approve this ordinance. Second.
Okay. Do you want to share that? That's the picture.
This is the property just next door, it's the, um, what's the?
Southern Weaving.
Southern Weaving, that's it, thank you. Southern Weaving there on the north, and then you see, everything in yellow is what we're talking about here, it's on the south side of the trail, that real thin line at Fern Street is written on top of it, that's the two properties on each side of the trail, and it's a maintenance agreement to allow Southern Weaving to, or Doodle.
Doodle Trail Properties.
LLC to maintain the right-of-way beside the trail, plant flowers or whatever to make it more attractive as they come in and out of their driveway.
Okay, so we have the motion on the floor, if we're ready to vote.
Can we talk to Southern Weaving about expanding that and planting flowers and beautification all the way up Highway 8? Can't do that.
We'll vote. All in favor of authorizing the conveyance of a right-of-way maintenance agreement with Doodle Trail LLC, raise your hand. Okay, none opposed. And then we have a new resolution, 2025-13 to accept certain roads from Meadow Ridge Homeowners Association into the city of Easly Roads Network.
Make a motion, we accept.
Accept. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Just the, just the Scribner's error on Dahlia Dane. Just the, just the Scribner's error on Dahlia, Dane, Tulane.
In the bullet points.
Yes.
I'm sure we can make that. I think we pointed that out to our attorney earlier, to change the line, it says Dane, there's a typo, it should say Lane. It's, she's going to, yes, she's going to change it. Any other discussion, concern before we vote? All in favor of accepting certain roads from Meadow Ridge Homeowners Association into the City of Easley Roads Network, raise your hand. All opposed? It's two opposed, okay. And that's it for our agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.